Good evening, good evening everyone. Welcome, as always. The next item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President?
And we do have...
Oh, go ahead, you go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
I would like to have check number 333636.
333...
636.
636.
For $1,000.
$1,000.
To Jeffrey P. Littman, L-I-T-M-A-N. Voted on separately. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to email or text or anything today.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay, we also have a change to the Exhibit A Personnel Recommendations, which is now numbers 178 through 188 as posted, and we'll have to read numbers 189 through 195 into the motion.
Item F.
That is Item F, correct. The Hiring Recommendations. Thank you. Did I move we approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Banda?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Beandi?
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yeses.
Thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda is the Reception of Visitors, which is the part where we give our... Anybody can address the board for their... if they would like. So we have Tammy.
Hi. I would love to speak to the board.
Go right ahead.
Okay. You may...
Thank you.
Thank you too. Who initiates the meeting? I... you are...
I know, but this isn't a... this isn't a meeting held in public, so we will investigate your claims and we'll get back with you.
You don't know, so you didn't initiate...
I didn't say I don't know. I said I'm not answering your question. I said we're gonna talk, we'll investigate it, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, so I have a few more questions. When and where...
What I would like you to do is if you have questions for the board, you may submit them to me in writing.
This is a public... I to...
No, I am not. I'm asking...
Why could you just...
Because I don't have the information for you, so if you'll give me the information you want...
But I'm gonna assume Mr. Eldron just on his own.
You can assume whatever you want, but that doesn't make it true. All you have to do is submit your questions, we'll get back to you, and we'll have a conversation. I'm happy to do that for you. We're not denying you your rights.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to be publicly known that I asked Mr. Anderson...
It's on public, it's in the recording. It's already noted.
Yes.
All you have to do is submit your questions in writing, I'll be happy to answer them. That's also on the record.
Speaking of recording, John, where is the live streaming? Are we only recording on tape?
We have live streaming over here. Tape delay.
Tape delay, and where's the tape?
Right up there. Go ahead and...
Oh, nice.
There you go.
Oh, oh...
I didn't know that. I learned something new today.
Oh, I thought that was a security thing.
There you go.
Thank you.
That's new, eh?
Yeah, thank you.
I was looking for the camera.
Yeah, I was looking for the camera.
Yeah, funny.
I just noticed the camera was missing a few meetings ago.
President's Report is next. I have nothing new to report, so we will move to committee reports.
The Curriculum Committee met...
Thanks, Willie. Next item... oh, excuse me, we're moving to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Just a couple items for the board for your information. We had included our anticipated summer hours for the summer of 2017 and when we go on four-day weeks. So that's information for the board that we're starting to work through in terms of our calendar planning. We also, due to the weather, keep an eye on some of our centennial events that are bouncing dates a little bit. So as you can imagine, with all the rain we've gotten, some of our outside events, we've had to reschedule their centennial events and celebration. I do know we have Allied Soccer at home this Saturday at 2:00? 1:00, Mark? Thank you. At 1:00? So we're excited about that. And also, we were in the middle of our testing, if you will. On the 5th, we administered the SAT to all of our juniors, and we've been working with some students with accommodations over the last handful of days after that, and they're finished, according to Ms. Garrick.
Mine is today. Finished today.
And we... because our junior class, if you remember, our junior class is the one class that we've committed to the ACT and the SAT for them because they were preparing for the ACT the past two years, and just because the state flipped over to the SAT, we decided this year to administer both tests for that class, and so they'll be taking their ACT the morning of the 19th. So that's just information, and I wanted to share that. We also have a report this evening. So our Mathematics Department, I think, is getting themselves all geared up over there and ready to go. Will, you want a short little introduction?
So we have the Math Department...
Here you.
Okay, as Willie said, my name's Mr. Pagod. I'm the teacher of the Math Department, so... Here we are. So the first thing we want to talk about was our vision. We have a wordy mission statement on the website that encompasses kind of all that we do. But what we really like to hang our hat on is really what's best for the student. In the end, our decisions made on placement, scheduling, anything else that goes on in the classroom, if it's gonna benefit the kid and the success of the student, we're gonna move forward. If it's not, let's not. There's three phases to our presentation. The first is the state department, so just facts, kind of little rant as group and as department. Journey of a student, so from middle school to the last days here at one. What does it look like from a leadership standpoint? What decisions and supports do you put in place for those students? And then finally, our accountability.
All right, so the last time Zach and I presented the board, a lot has happened. In the summer of 2013, Zach and I were called into the district office, and we had some unsettling data that was presented to us. What we realized was, looking at the class of 2012 and the class of 2013 with data, the graduating class of 2012, 2013, roughly 30% of the kids who started in our college prep Algebra I course as freshmen ended up in our college core Algebra II classes, juniors. So that was a little disturbing, the fact that we had a huge job with students to go down a tier. So what we were challenged with was to, how do we keep the kids in that track? How do we keep them successful? What kind of interventions can we offer those kids? What kind of lifelines can we throw at them? Do we keep them motivated, keep them in that track? We're gonna have some data later to show that kids who stay in that track, regardless of the grades that they get, still do better on the ACT and hopefully on the SAT when we have some of that data compared to if they got a really high-grade like an elementary course. So to talk about some of the data, the class of 2017, roughly 95.67% of the high school seniors took a math class per semester, so a fourth-year math course. Semester two, little bit of a drop, but you know how that is with seniors sometimes. Still really high at eight, 4.81%. Just some facts about the district, where we're at in the department. Thirty-three teachers altogether, eighteen at Oak Plain, fifteen at Allman. One of those is a traveling, so it's like seventeen and sixteen, so it doesn't look like a lopsided should. Ninety-seven percent of us are working towards or already have a master's degree, and our class sizes for first semester were 23.57 and 22.96 for second semester. And then we had to throw in there the highest was the course Geometry, 28, or Honors Geometry, and the lowest was our Sheltered Period and a Half courses, roughly around 20.
So that's kind of where we're at. So the journey of students, so where do they come from? All right, well, they come to us from all the middle schools, all the senior districts surrounding them. And listed there are the cutoff scores. They take a math test, and we place them based on their test scores and what course they completed at the middle school level. If you notice, our Honors Geometry cutoffs are 251, Algebra I's are 226. And just to give you kind of the history lesson here, about three, four years ago, when all this transition started happening, this used to be a 229. So all students that scored a 229 or higher went into Algebra I. All students that scored below 229 went into our Concepts of Algebra track. So we crunched something in Algebra and said, "Kids are being really successful in Semester One of Algebra, so we need to make the course a little more challenging and kind of lower the bar so we can give more kids up in there and still be successful." So we lowered that by three points. And then we also implemented our Period and a Half Algebra classes. So it's the same curriculum as our Algebra I students, it's just taller, but longer period of time, with more contact time with the teacher. So what that allowed us to do is drag the score all the way down to 217 and 225, allowing those kids to still be successful in their winter sports. And then finally, our Concepts of Algebra cutoff is now right around 217. And a big part of this is our articulation efforts with the middle schools. Two things that I'd say we're really proud of is our Algebra I coalition. So we now have ongoing working Google Doc, which is our Algebra I curriculum with all the standards. Will fills it out, and Mike can do it without as well, because that's the majority of our students coming. So now we're transparent, we know exactly what we're teaching, what they're teaching, what we don't get to, and a communication piece is there which leads into the trust. For years, it's always been back and forth, and now we really have a healthy relationship with both of those schools. And even to a point where now they teach our Algebra I and our Honors Geometry curriculum within their school, and we have a number of kids that come here each year that aren't necessarily prepared for all the level classes. And we work really hard to identify those students. And we're at a point now where I have a contact with the administration over at those schools, and we have identified those kids before they come in. So we have a list of those names until the first day of school, and we can start implementing supports, whether it be in the summer or those first days of school for those students. So once they get to us, this is our course sequence and document. I have that coming.
Oh, that doesn't do any good.
So the students come into us in Honors Geometry, Honors Algebra II are high-achieving students that come to us and work through our Honors track. The majority of our students come here in our Algebra I and Algebra 1.5 class, which I referenced in the last thing, and then they work through our College Prep course, and then this is our College Core students that go through this. I have three courses highlighted there. The Algebra Period and a Half is one that I spoke through already, which is placements. The Geometry Period and a Half is one that I'm gonna speak to on a few slides here. And then the Math Four is a new course that we'll be implementing next year, which is geared towards preparing kids in that track for the next level after high school, getting more skills. And then this is the data that we collected. This was one of our big goals this year, was our data project. So what we did was we tracked last year's graduating class, the math class that took freshman year, sophomore year, junior year, and senior year, the grades they got in that course, the correlating standardized test scores and their AP scores. And one thing we noticed that depending on what class they're in their junior year, there's a direct correlation with the score they're getting on standardized tests. So this would be our College Core kids in that yellow track. Our middle track would end up in here, or a year advanced in here, and then our honors group would go down here. So really, our main focus right here was between these two. How can we push these high-achieving kids in Algebra II up to this other track? This is better results. And what support are we giving them to bridge that gap? Just to give the reference what Keith was talking about, when we saw that number, I'd say what, it's roughly 26%?
They're almost lost, yeah.
So the 32 of 15%, so a lot of the work we've done over the past few years is bridging that gap and providing the supports, which then drives down that number of students that are seeing more success with that.
What does the 15% mean and the 32% mean that are in the top 15%?
The number of students in our junior population taking that course.
Gotcha.
So 15% of juniors take that course.
Gotcha, thank you.
So as we zoom out and compare them now, I know it's a lot to digest, so I'll give you a second. Take any questions?
Good question, yeah. So the largest percent, which I think is 19...
32% would be our...
Oh, 32, gotcha. So let's track that out.
Those are kids that would start freshman year, seen sophomore year, and junior year.
That's the typical third-year course for our college prep students.
Gotcha. And those are the majority of our students that take pre-calc, because that's a form of course that really helps them prepare for college entrance exams and pass and be ready for college.
Any other questions on the data?
Can I ask a quick one?
Absolutely.
How does the Warren program compare to, let's say, Graves Lake and Grant and some of the other schools in the area?
In terms of just the flow of classes?
Flow of class and the line of the school, or the... And if you don't have that data, I understand.
I can say off the top of my head, it's very similar. I think something that we offer, and I can't speak versus the specific schools that we discuss...
I wasn't putting them out...
No, I... Our hybrid one-and-a-half courses, I don't know how common that is at other high schools. But I know if you ignore our Period and a Half Algebra and Period and a Half Geometry, you know, most schools have...
Well, I wouldn't put the kids in those classes, so...
Yeah, but most schools have a similar three-length kind of approach. Like I said, what we've been trying to do over the last three or four years is eliminate kids starting in this college prep track that end up in our college core track.
Okay.
I've got another question. It kind of looks like the honors track starts the first year, and then there's like not an option to switch over, but I'm sure there is at some point. Somebody could jump from that middle track.
Yeah, I mean...
Doing really well and jumping through.
Absolutely. And there's always...
Well, what it always was, placements can be a challenge in that realm, because if you're... these are moving at a much faster pace to move over. If you're successful, again, it boils down to communicating with the parents and speaking with the student. If we think it's best for the kid and they're gonna be successful, we want to push them to their highest limits of the challenge.
Right.
If it's a point where we don't think they're gonna be successful, we want them in a course where they can be getting As and Bs and retaining that information, so that it's a win-win for themselves.
We're always up for kids wanting to challenge themselves. It's not that on my end, when kids request to maybe, you know, calculus is the dream to take senior year. If I don't think it's a good idea based on the historical grades, it's not that I'm trying to talk them out of it, but I want to make sure they're very well aware of what they're getting themselves into, more than anything. It's very that we say, "No, you can't take that class." It's more about if you do take this class, what steps, what interventions are you gonna use to be successful? See, I'm discouraged, more than anything else.
Oh, that second part, where for the AP, no, the AP people. Thank you. Okay.
You see it?
Yeah. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay, so we kind of talked about how they get there in the history lesson. How do we keep them there? We kind of want to talk about some of those supports that we put in place. So the first one is our Period and a Half classes. We talked to the Algebra I already. That was a way to adjust cutoff scores as incoming freshmen to get them started in that College Core track and College Prep track, sorry, and keep them going in that. For the last two years, we implemented the Period and a Half Geometry. And what we've done is we took the Concepts of Algebra kids that were successful. So kids that started in that far-right track, in that first yellow course, and we took all the As and Bs and the S and T's. Which ones do you think have the work ethic to be successful at the next level? And we pulled two sections of that class. So that's anywhere from 40 before the kids each year that were bringing up and challenging at the next level. The reason is, with that Period and a Half, they have the 45-minute normal class period, and they have that extra time, the individual time to work with the teacher, built there in the course with the extra support, and then they go to lunch afterwards. So instead of having to study all, they're receiving more math instruction. Also, we have our Code Top classes. Next year, we'll be running two Algebra's and two Geometry at the Oak Plain campus. That allows a really an intervention and a support system for specialized students that are in our general education courses and are seeing success. And we're giving them that extra teacher and that extra support to help them through that course. And then lastly, our differentiation. These are kind of the amazing things that are happening in the math classroom. We have our different types of learning, from traditional to abundant learning, to a foot classroom, to a foot for mastering. The young ladies that teach Concepts of Algebra, we want a foot-for-mastery type learning course where the students have the videos, they have individual work time, they have individual time building with the teacher, and they're doing a concept check from campus before they leave the classroom each day. So we've seen huge success in that building of a course, and our grades are higher than ever have been because of the work those teachers are putting in and the time they're putting in for those kids to make sure that they do well. And then owning your role in learning is kind of a new fad in education, I guess. As the world changes, as success and careers changes, as collaborations needed, and more problem-solving skills, that's being built into our courses each day, and assessments as well to make sure kids are being prepared for the next level.
So at the Alden Campus, the supports we offer are very similar to what Zach's referring to at Oak Plain. In addition to staff staying before and after school, our resource room always has many record numbers of kids coming in for help. Our Algebra II and Algebra II trade classes, or our College Prep and our College Core classes, have taken a lot of time to prepare the kids for the ACT, oh, excuse me, the SAT. Now we're gonna start preparing for the ACT, and keep those academics straightened for Algebra II too. So they spent a lot of days preparing the kids for the SAT. When I would pop into the resource room the last couple of weeks, they always have their SAT packets out, and they're asking questions. Honestly, some of them threw me for a loop because I'm like, "I don't think it's that one," but you know. So it's really interesting. One of the things that I kind of forgot to allude to earlier is, you know, starting three, four years ago, we also implemented Common Core with our Algebra I course, and then the following year with our Geometry, and then Algebra II trade in this year with pre-calc. So it's a new process for the teachers too. Not only are we doing all these new interventions and trying all these new things, but it's also a new curriculum for us. It's more challenging. It aligns to the Common Core standards, and you know, we're hoping that will help improve our test scores also. The big picture, the vertical alignment piece that Zach's got up here, hopefully you guys can kind of see it. I'll read it off to you in a second. A day in February and a day in March, Zach, myself, some representatives from Oak Plains, some representatives from Allman, from the honors group, and then also from our college prep group of teachers, got together to talk about vertical alignment throughout our courses. So what Zach had up earlier with the three branches, our honors, our college prep, and our college core courses, how can we cheer our topics and skills on every month and second? So when they come in freshman year, you know, we're gonna hold their handle a little bit, and then sophomore, we start to let go, junior, we start to let go, and more senior, we say, "Forget it, you're on your own." How do we cheer that really well? So the skills and ideas that we narrowed it down to was note-taking, reviewing for assessments, assessment format, how is the test format of calculator, non-calculus, things like that. Reviewing for a final exam, the format of the final exam. What's the purpose of homework? How do we weigh it? And then lifelines that we offer, whether it might be retakes, might be using notes on something, whatever the lifeline is that's appropriate for that course at that age level. So that was the study skills part of it. We talked about grade breakdown, how do we weigh our grades in each course? Calculator skills, what's important for a freshman in Algebra I compared to sophomore in Geometry, or a junior honors, pre-calc, things like that. Reading and writing skills, and I think that's something that we implemented a lot more when we did switch over to Common Core. But what was really interesting, I think Zach would agree with me, is when we finally had it on the document to look at across four years, just how much we actually do and they have in common, and it actually teared pretty well with both the honors and the college prep teachers.
One really cool thing as well is Cali Keith's assistant, he did a lot of language upfront on researching universities, and they got back to us and they gave us a lot of data and comments about what's the expectation at the university level. And then we reached out to the middle schools and got that information as well. So we have a starting point and an ending point, and then as a group, we kind of build in the gaps in how we're gonna get that prepared.
I don't know about you guys, we've been out of college for a while now, so we had ideas. You know, when we went through college and what it was, and it was very eye-opening, especially for some really major universities. You know, this is how they handle freshman in their college, freshman college math course. It was great to see. So the last component of this piece is our ACT, or, excuse me, AP exam scores. What we have here, the 13, 14, 15, 16-year scores for Calc AB, AP Stats, Calc BC, and then Calc BC also includes a Calc AB sub-score. So we just have the data there. What's really interesting is that you might look at this and say, "Well, our Calc AB scores actually dropped. It went from a 4.29 in 2013, and then last year's graduating class, you know, had a 3.7, 3.2." What's important to understand was this is the year we pulled a lot of the kids out that were taking Calc AB as juniors, those honors discrete kids, and those kids would take Calc BC then the following year. And what's impressive about that is the Calc BC kids overall increased, the number of tests taken, because the discrete kids were entered into that group, but the scores jumped. They went from a 3.5 to a 4.6 over the course of four years, which is way higher than the national average for a BC exam score. And over the first of those four years, we had 19 more kids take the class. So while it looks a little deceiving that they went from a 4.2 to a 3.7 in AB, which is one semester of college calculus, the kids that used to get their fours and fives in here were now thrown into this mix and given... So while it looks a little deceiving that are, went from a four-two to a three-seven in AB, which is one semester of college calculus, the kids that used to get their fours and fives in here were now thrown into this mix and given a much higher course to take and to accept. Um, and then the BC subscores for AB obviously remain consistent, but they did spike up, what, four-seven and four-six-five? So that's what I think is most impressive there, is just, you know, make sure everybody understands, you know, AB did drop, there was a reason for it, and look at the impressive BC scores that came along.
Accomplishments, uh, we have two presentations this year. The concepts team I spoke of earlier in the presentation, uh, presented ICTM, which is Illinois Council Teachers of Mathematics, so that's a statewide conference. And then T twenty-one con, excuse me, was a, a conference, uh, based on technology and Illinois State University. And Mr. Long, one of our teachers who does a foot for mastery course, who's been in the algebra two and honors, algebra two, went and presented, uh, mathematics classroom. Posted, uh, this year, we hosted two groups. One of those are them from Australia, Australian, that came and collected data and observed our classrooms. And then we sat down and had lunch with them and kind of did a debriefing. And then the second one was, um, rather large group from Korea, and they came to observe our classroom models and get some data and just kind of pick our brains about what we're doing here forward. And then finally, our math team. Uh, this year, we had a record number of freshmen in junior, which was good to see, and the freshmen took third in college. Um, to explain math team, it's kind of like, uh, if you understand.
Everyone's got an idea already, I can see.
Kind of the soccer rankings, right? You know how there's the A division and the B division, and you win the B division, you jump up into the A division? For years, we were always kind of at the top of the B division. About three years ago, we jumped up into the A division. So now to see us climb to third place early with our freshmen is exciting, so we have a break.
And that's all we got. Their math meets.
Yes.
Exactly.
Any other questions for us?
No, very nice.
Thank you for doing such a nice job.
We win the, uh, most creative presentation of all of the departments so far. That was, that was pretty creative.
Let's get that in the announcements in the morning, would you? Okay, then we're going to move on to new business. First item under new business is the, uh, lease with Zion Benton for our summer school driver's education cars.
Warren has three driver's education cars of its own and, uh, we need two extras. And we've been fortunate enough to work with Zion Benton High School to, uh, use a couple of their cars that they don't use in the summer. So, uh, we have a two-year lease in front of you. Uh, this would be our sixth year, uh, leasing these vehicles. And, uh, since it is so difficult, we have a lease anywhere else for that year, we're very thankful for Zion Benton to, uh, provide this opportunity for us. So we're going to ask the, uh, Board of Education to approve that lease and a copy of that lease is attached for your review.
Carol?
Yes.
Refresh my memory, last year, didn't we pay more to rent the cars?
Uh, last year, we leased two, the year before, we leased three, and we did pay two thousand dollars a month.
That's what I thought, so we're doing a good job. It's only thirteen thirty-three, thirty-three instead of two thousand a month.
Right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
No questions, and we need a motion?
I don't know if you approved the lease with Zion Benton High School for the summer school driver's education cars.
I can. Everybody.
Did you get that, Jean?
Amanda?
Boss.
Everybody.
Yeah, the whole.
Conway?
Oh, yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Munda?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Uh, next item is the parking lot seal coating and striping bid, ever popular.
Very popular. Uh, the, uh, we have a committee of administrators that reviews our long-term capital needs and prioritizes projects for the district. The two projects that we have prioritized for seventeen eighteen are parking lot seal coating and striping and, uh, carpet, carpet replacement. You'll see the carpet bid at the, uh, April twenty-fifth meeting. Uh, we received, uh, five bids, uh, on, uh, March thirtieth. Uh, we did a very detailed scope review with the two lowest b- bidders. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder was Patriot Paving with a total bid of seventy-nine thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. This would be to seal coat both the Oakland and the Allman campus and to real, uh, patch and re-stripe. So, uh, this bid does meet within the budget, uh, budget, uh, guidelines that, uh, we had established, uh, several years ago. So we are recommending, uh, awarding the parking lot seal coating and striping bid to Patriot Paving in the amount of seventy-nine thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars.
Question.
Yes.
Well, when's the last time we had this service done?
Um, we, we really haven't. So, uh, our, our maintenance staff has striped. Six years, you think?
Six years, you'll be at it by now.
Okay. Years, but I don't know that we, yeah, maintenance paints the line, but we really do not do it on as regular basis as we need to.
It's been needed for a long.
Right, we have replaced sections of parking lots in renovation, but this.
This is our, this is our first go around on this, for this type of service. What would you explain the discrepancies between, you know, the.
Different bidders?
Yeah.
Uh, Patriot paving is a, is a large, very large paving outfit. And so this job, they use, uh, smaller projects like schools to fill in, to keep their staff working. But their reference checks were wonderful and, uh, they, um, really met all of our questions and reviews, so.
And they did woodlands, right?
They did woodlands, they've done a num- they did grayslakes, they've done a number of schools. So we actually did site visits and talked to the maintenance directors at the different schools too. So while it was the lowest, we are very comfortable with it.
How come that one is so out of whack compared to the others?
Uh, we.
Is it a small company or is it a?
You know, we didn't even, we didn't even spend the time asking that question because we really wanted to focus on the two lowest bidders and really, really do a thorough review there. They, they could have just, you know.
So out of whack compared to.
Sometimes they just blow it and throw a number out there, to be quite honest.
Sometimes they don't want the work, so they, if they're going to get it, they're going to make a lot of money.
Right.
So they double it up and say, I don't want this, but if I get it, it's going to be worthwhile.
Right.
Is there any specs around what they're actually using, how long it's guaranteed?
Uh, yes, we do have, uh, the product, and I always get the initials wrong, M D S D sheets or vice versa.
M S D.
Yeah, you got it, yeah.
M S D S sheets, so material data sheets. So we've reviewed the product that they're going to use and the product that they're going to use on, on the striping. And, uh, we do have, uh, the information on the, the expected length of time. All the literature says, uh, you know, seal coating new parking lot within the first three to four years and then seal coating every few years thereafter. But this is a, a low toxic product and, uh, that's another benefit of it.
Great.
I'm going to approve the parking lot.
Second.
Ready?
Drake, second by Beyondi.
Correct.
Yes. Pauls?
Yes.
Munda?
Yes.
Conway? Andy?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next item is the tax levy extension report.
I just wanted to give the board an update on our tax levy extension. Uh, just to, uh, update you, this morning, I received a, an email from the Lake County Clerk's Office that they had made a mistake in our extension. And, uh, I had to submit a revised extension. The good news to that is that we are receiving, uh, almost thirty-six thousand dollars more in taxes than we had expected. And their mistake was that they had a formula error in their worksheets and they did not credit us with all the new construction in the district.
Nice.
So, um, just to kind of summarize, uh, this, uh, we're going to receive in our operating funds, which are cap funds under the property tax extension limitation law, otherwise known as PTAL, um, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-six thousand fifty-five dollars. Uh, that represents a seven percent, seven tenths of a percent, again, seven tenths of a percent CPI increase. And the remainder of about, uh, five tenths of a percent for new construction. So that's how the breakdown goes. We had a little over ten million dollars of new construction. Our equalized assessed value is over two billion dollars. Um, so our equalized assessed value increased four point three four percent over the prior year. Uh, I do want to put this, and, and let's talk about the budgetary impact for one second. Uh, I budgeted a hundred and seven thousand dollars less or three tenths of a percent because we're a little conservative. So fortunately, spread out over two budget years, we'll get another hundred and seven thousand dollars, which, not a lot, but it's better than being in the opposite situation.
Correct, correct.
Um, so, uh, to put it in perspective, the four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars that we're going to receive in taxes next year doesn't cover, um, a portion, even a, even probably half of our salary increases. So unfortunately, uh, hopefully the state picks, assists the districts, and we're not the only one in this, this situation. So, uh, let's look for the Senate and the House of Representatives and our governor to finally pass something.
Any rushing?
Any questions I can answer on the levy? Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next item is the approval of disciplinary recommendation for student two thousand seventeen oh six.
Sorry.
Okay. So we need a motion?
I'm going to approve this one recommendation for student seventeen oh six.
Second.
It's amended.
It says amended, so.
Yes, it has to be amended.
I'll move to approve this one recommendation for student seven.
Be amended.
F sixteen has amended.
Second.
So we need to do that because the question at the last meeting, oh, the, she with the appointment, questioned about the legality of it, so, um, thank you, Mike, for amending that.
Thank you, okay. Roll call.
Motion by Munda, second by Conway. Drake.
Yes.
Pauls? Andy?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Conway? Munda?
Yes.
Yes. So Liz, that check you called out is exactly a thousand dollars?
Exactly a thousand, yes.
Okay, then, so I'll make, I move to approve the payment of bills for four eleven two thousand seventeen in the amount of five million four hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
Roll call.
By Anderson, second by Beyondi. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes.
So then I move to approve the payment of the bill for check number three-three-three-six-three-six in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Second.
I just want to point out again, as I did at the last meeting, that, um, section one oh five ILCS five slash ten through twenty-two point six clearly states that the board has to be appointed by the hearing office, uh, appoint the hearing officer, I'm sorry. And we, the board did not appoint the hearing officer, and that's my objection to paying this bill. Since he was not appointed by the board, he was not a legal representation of the board. And therefore, uh, whoever made the decision to hire him should pay the money, not the school board. Thank you.
I just would like to reiterate that I abstained from that vote because I did not know who the hearing officer was, who appointed him, when he was appointed. And the, and I played, uh, blamed the law firm who was in, involved in that and should have known the law.
Okay, roll call. Go ahead.
I would just like to reiterate, what I had said as well, I read the statement, part of the statement that was underlying it, it did not clearly say that appointment was required by the board. It was a question that we asked and we were going to look for some advice from our attorneys. I don't know if we have any update on that.
He said it's advisable that the board knows the process that's in place and that if we, obviously, the circumstances can also dictate what we need to do. Uh, but there are two separate items also between the vote for the young man and the actual payment for the hearing officer. Clear about that, that the two items are, uh, separate.
I, I feel this, the language of the statute was clear, the board or a hearing officer appointed by it. I think it's crystal clear.
Got her. So we're going to appoint some hearing officers in the future, so, when we go forward, we should do that like next meeting.
I would also like to point out that this hearing officer was more than double.
Carol, the previous one?
I think it was almost quadruple what we paid our previous hearing officer.
I feel like, uh, Gail, France charged two hundred and fifty dollars in this.
But we'll search for some more, so. Okay, we're voting on the bill. Roll call. Do we have a motion?
We do. Motion by Anderson, second by Munda.
Ready?
The Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyondi?
No.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake? Ms. Campbell?
No.
Yes.
Uh, yes, of course.
I have five yes and two no, motion carries.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is the hiring recommendations. So, um, I'll move to approve the Exhibit A hiring recommendations, number one seventy-eight through one eighty-eight as posted. And one eighty-nine, Taylor Butera reassignment. One ninety, Laura Kirk promotion. One ninety-one, Taylor Butera reassignment. One ninety-two, Laura Kirk, hmm, promotion again, she got promoted twice. One ninety-three, Clay Kovak, new hire. One ninety-four, Jordan Smason, new hire. One ninety-five, Jordan Smason, new hire.
Uh, John, I think we need to correct that one ninety is a, I don't know if it's a resignation or a reassignment, but it's not a promotion.
Would be a reassignment, right? Okay, and then one ninety is a reassignment.
And could I ask a question?
Always.
Um, why do we not have salaries for one eighty-nine? I understand why we don't have one for one ninety, but I don't understand why we don't have one for one eighty-nine. Is it the same salary?
Well, that's just her moving out of that position. Well, that's just her moving out of that position into her new position.
I just wanted to be sure that that was clear.
Yep, understood.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay. I do.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Munda. Andy?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. No, oh, never mind.
That's a yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Too late now. Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. Second.
I explained why I abstained, which is what I thought I needed to do according to the law. And in the closed session, the question was not about the choice of a hearing officer, it was about statutory requirements surrounding appointment, not the discussion of the choice of a hearing officer, because.
Not of that specific hearing officer.
So.
Right. The process you're talking about. Got it.
On the, on the closed, it was misleading because it made it sound like we were discussing choosing someone, and we weren't, we were discussing the statute about.
Okay. We can make an adjustment to that. We'll go ahead and vote, and we'll do it as amended. So, roll call.
Um, motion is by.
Yes.
Walls?
Yes.
And we're going to amend.
Yes, we're going to put that into the process. I'll make sure that's amended.
Okay, yes.
I'll take care of it.
Mrs. Beyond?
Yes.
Drake?
Yes.
Hanway?
Yes.
Uh, yes, yes, of course.
Seven, yes.
So that is the last item on our agenda for this evening. As some of you may know, we had an election. Shocking, I know. So this is potentially, barring any changes, Ms. Campbell's and Ms. Beyond's last meeting. So even though I haven't necessarily always agreed with them, I certainly appreciate your service and your, your dedication. I don't, I never doubted your dedication because you were here all the time, so I greatly appreciate that. And it's not easy to come here, so I, I certainly understand it, and I just wanted to say thank you and good luck.
Second.
I also have a small gift. It's a little bit of our appreciation from the district, like, and Liz, obviously, as I try to say, there are people that are, remember, and have people willing to step up, volunteer their time, endless time, at times hard time. Interfacing with the community on his, on behalf of our students is a great responsibility, and both of you have taken it very seriously. Kat's, your ability to constantly have in your mind how parents are feeling and what they are bringing to the table, and you've always been very open about communicating that, and I really appreciate it. And Liz, I hear that there's been no stronger advocate for students that are at risk in dealing with hard situations, and really, your advocacy has put up a second in none. So I just want to personally thank both of you. Let's all give a round of applause.
I, I just would like to say that my involvement in service comes from the way I was raised, by my mother and my grandmother. I grew up in a small town in Iowa where the claim to fame was they filmed the Music Man there, and so my mother always talked about Shirley Jones, the Partridge Family mom that, you know, was there for the big parade. And also, it was the town where Carrie Chapman Cat, the suffragist who helped women get the right to vote, was the superintendent. And at that time, superintendents were not allowed to be married, so she could only be a superintendent while she was single. But my grandmother remembered those days. She died in her late eighties when I was a freshman in college, so a long time ago. And she talked about the importance of Carrie Chapman Cat's work and the importance of voting, because she said, if you don't vote, you can't bitch. So she said, if you.
You're here.
If you vote and the person that you voted for doesn't get elected, you can go bitch at them for not doing what they said. And if the person that you didn't vote for gets elected, well, you still have that right, right to bitch. And so she also said, if you don't, then you have to deal with whatever hogwash that they give you. But the, the message that my mother and grandmother taught me was the slogan from Carrie Chapman Cat about service. And what Carrie Chapman Cat said was, to the rights that need assistance, to the wrongs that need resistance, go serve. And so they both taught me to serve in your church, and in your schools, and in your community, and in charitable organizations. And I thank them for teaching me that, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve here on the Warren Township High School School Board for four years. Thank you.
Well, I, I'd like to just share with you that when I started my career, let's see, forty-something years ago, I started out as a teacher. And as a teacher in the school district that I worked in, if you married another teacher and you were both in the same school, and it was all a consolidated school, so we went K through twelve, if you and your husband worked in the high school, you were not allowed to be married. And another thing that your younger teachers may not remember is, you were, if, once you got pregnant, as soon as you started showing, you were not allowed to teach. You had to go on leave right then. So things have changed a lot in the teachers' field as far as that. And so I would like to thank, I have always been a service-minded person. John asked me about it a long time ago, and I said, you know, in grade school, I remember being involved in things, going out and seeing sick people, working in, and if you recall in the days when I grew up, which you won't recall, none of you are old enough, but they used to have homes. And I remember one of my friends, mother and father, and her father was a doctor, had a Down Syndrome child. The child was beautiful, but the doctor made his wife put the child in a home, because that's what you did at that time. So I was, I was just, I couldn't understand that, and I still don't understand that theory. And I appreciate that parents keep their special needs children now and work with them as diligently as they can. And so I've always been involved in service, whether it was through my church, whether it was through my school, whether it was in my private life. And so, again, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity of serving, and I look forward to being an advocate for people who need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And on that note, I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
That would be myself and Ms. Beyond, she gets the last second.
Oh.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson, second by Beyond. Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Munda?
Yes.
Hanway?
Yes.
Walls?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. It's been fun.
Thank you.